I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Let's get into the agenda right away. Old business, we have the public hearing for zoning amendment application 02, no, 03, 20-1 submitted by Ryland Inc. That has been tabled once again, so we will move past that and go on to new business. First item on new business is a work session with respect to zoning amendments for residential conservation and development district, or RCDs. And I'd like to turn the meeting over to Heather and our guest speaker. So, if you would please.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone tonight. I have with us this evening Dave Ridachi, who is the Lake County Planning and Community Development Director. He frequently visits all the township zoning commissions and does an introduction of who he is, what they do, and how they can assist townships with zoning, planning, and those type of things.
Good evening, Dave Ridachi. I'm the Planning and Community Development Director and also Secretary to the Planning Commission. Our Planning Commission helps the townships and they review the zoning text and we send them back all the recommendations every year. We also assist with reviewing the RCD plans for subdivision review. The Planning Commission approves all subdivisions in Concord Township, so we have sub rights and the RCD and the subdivision regulations are supposed to both work together. We do have a section in the sub rights on conservation developments, which I'm not quite sure, looking at the Township zoning code, if you fully understand what we have in our RCD section. It's one of the things we can do is reduce the width of rightaways with the recommendation of the Utilities Department and the county engineer. So instead of having a 60-foot wide rightaway, we can get some more space by reducing down to a 50-foot rightaway, so long as we have room to get storm sewer and sanitary lines and water lines into that area, so they could help on things. We also have access to other township zoning codes, so we can take from them and give you guys suggestions from those. We can also do other researches on other counties and other cities. I'm also part of a group called County Planning Directors Association of Ohio, which I can bounce ideas off of them from everywhere, from Delaware County, Medina County, Warren County, which are all counties that are developing and have similar issues to what Concord has, so I can get ideas from them if you wish us to do some research for you. We're also, we're available to talk to the members individually if they want to give any questions. You're more than welcome to give us a call over at our office and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have on the RCD or any other zoning or planning questions that might arise. Doesn't necessarily mean not to be limited to RCD. We can talk about different zoning sizes, we can talk about what to look for in different businesses, or how to write different codes. If Airbnb's been becoming more and more of a hassle, and we can, if you have questions about something like that, we can do some research and get back answers to you. So, we usually try to make it up to Township, each Township Zoning Commission, once a year just to say hi and make sure you guys know we're still here and we're here to help you guys. I'm also here to answer any questions on whatever's on the agenda tonight. I'll also get back to you if anything, if I can't answer them tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I had an email from Andy saying he's trying to get into the meeting, but it said that the meeting hasn't started yet, but I think it has started, so I'm not sure why.
Is that Andy?
No, I, somehow I'm in the meeting twice now. I don't know. I'm not sure. Okay, so Andy might not be able to join us this evening. Okay. Thank you, Dave. All right. So I apologize for not sending like a nice packet in advance. December was, you know, crazy with the holidays and vacation schedules and everything like that. I know at our last meeting, we really started talking about, we reviewed in detail the previous RCD developments, what their yield plans look like, what their RCD plans look like, how many lots, that, those kind of things. I provided just a summary of that, that table again to you that we kind of went through, looking at the plans and everything too with the PowerPoint we did. And we discussed, you know, do we want to make the developers provide, you know, additional documentation on whether justifying that the yield plan is reasonable, like some kind of economic data? And it seemed that the consensus of the board with that, that was just one more additional thing for them to give us. We're trying to make it a little bit more streamlined for the developer and the township with reviewing those. So, it didn't seem like we wanted to do that, and one of the suggestions was made that the yield plan really should be the justice, should show why the land is really prime for an RCD. So, we were even talking with Dave Ridachi and Dan Donaldson from Lake County Soil and Water, they had both recommended that one of the things that we should ask from developers is that existing conditions plan. Show us just a map of what are the existing conditions, what are the current contours, where are the streams, where are the wetlands? And then show us the riparian setbacks on that plan, as like a separate clean plan. And then on the yield plan, you know, you really need to design those lots on the yield plan in harmony almost with those wetlands. And if you're going to show significant impacts on those wetlands on your yield plan, then maybe you're not eligible for an RCD. And I, Hirom, I think you had made a comment too that you didn't think that they should be able to count those wetlands as though...
Yeah, I don't think we should be able, or they should be able to count the wetlands. I mean, to me, that's, that's off limits. And I don't think that, I don't think they should be able to count that in their acreage or density or whatever. It's unusable land.
Yeah, and I struggle with how we, a little bit on how we would, would write this. And I haven't gone to our legal counsel yet for them to review any of the text or, you know, anyone really yet, or even bounced it back at Planning Commission staff. But I think we have a way to maybe let the development community know that we don't want to see yield plans where you're mitigating the majority of the wetlands. I'm just not 100% sure on how we could write that, or, you know. So, still trying to work on that. Then there were some other ideas where, do we just eliminate the yield plan completely and come up with some other way to determine overall density for an RCD, a completely different review process? Now, that really wasn't recommended in the comp plan, so I don't know that we want to deviate too far from what we're doing, but there are other models out there that you could do. I've heard from some of the developers that if you could just tell us a maximum density, that would be a lot easier. But I hesitate, you know, reservations on that too, because they could get extra lots even though, because there might be a lot more streams and wetlands where they're going to maybe not protect as much open space or get more lots in than, than they should be able to, or... There's just a lot of, there's different things that the township can consider as far as that review process. I don't know if that's something that the board would want us to look into. I know that Dave has indicated that they'd be willing to take a look at, you know, previous subdivisions that were already approved to kind of figure out what their overall densities were, how much of the project was actually used towards roads versus lots, to try to give us some data to determine, you know, like on a conventional subdivision, if you have 30 acres, how many lots are you really going to get based on existing subdivisions? And how many, how many lots they got to maybe assist the township in trying to determine what a reasonable, what am I saying? To help us determine how much of that land area can actually be used towards, towards lots versus...
Towards lots. Okay.
Stormwater areas, rightaway areas. So I don't know if that's something that we want to do, or if we want to just kind of stay in line with what the comp plan was recommending and really focus on how do we improve the review of the yield plan? And then looking at some of the different RCD design features too that they were recommending that maybe we add in as either required or recommended for the plans.
I know from my experience on one of these, and I think we all know which one, I was not as thorough as what I should have been on the review of the yield plan. And I think if I would have gone through that with what I know now, I would have demanded that they take out all the wetlands out of their area and then develop their yield plan or whatever, a preliminary plot plan on that. And, you know, take all the riparian setbacks, take all that out of the area, because that is unusable land, undevelopable land.
Secondly, it is not, you still have the option, all developers have the options to mitigate wetlands. The first, the core always goes by with the first, do no harm. They want you to try to avoid the wetlands, try not to utilize them as part of the thing. But even on some of these subdivisions, they're going to have to cross streams, they're going to have to mitigate some wetlands with the roads. The thing, if the wetlands smack down in the middle of the, of the lots, then they're going to go, they're not going to go around the wetlands because it's going to push the road too far over and they're not going to be able to put a lot or have usable open space...
Correct.
...in between the road and the, and the edge of the wetland. And if you go around, you're putting in more, you're putting in more concrete, more asphalt as you go around instead of going straight through. They do have the ability to mitigate. And it should be, try to do as least harm as possible as you're looking at the, at the yield plan. And so try to push the wetlands into the 40-foot setback of the R1 development, into the side setbacks of the lots, so you're not, so you're not saying, hey, I got this two-acre wetland, I'm going to put two houses right in the middle of that two-acre wetland, and I'm going to mitigate the whole thing, because that's unrealistic.
That's, that's right.
And so, and that, you gotta, to express to developers, they have to have a realistic expectation if they're going to actually be able to develop that. They're not going to be able to say, I'm going to put two houses in the middle of the wetland, because it's going to be maximum density, because that's not realistic. And it's, but the township's got to be on the same side also to have a realistic expectation that they're not going to be able to avoid all wetlands.
Okay, okay. I agree. There's a balance, there's a balance there. Now, the one other thing we discussed was the, what did we call it? The density increase.
Ah, yeah.
And we discussed getting rid of it altogether, or keeping it, or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know what we decided on that area or not.
Well, I think there was maybe some concern that what would be the incentive then for the developer? So my, I guess if we take away the density bonus, is there still enough incentive for the developer? And I remember somebody had said, well, yeah, the incentive is the smaller lot, you know, which is what people want now, which is what the market is demanding.
Okay.
That would be something to, I don't know, I mean...
The other, the other incentive I've always heard about conservation development are shorter roads, less length, less cost in construction, and reducing, trying to reduce the length of roads. Some of these developments are still have your standard long, long 1400-foot block length, thousand-foot long cul-de-sacs, and doing two or three cul-de-sacs in a conservation development. When you're putting them, when you're putting a 100-foot cul-de-sac hole, that's a lot of concrete, a lot of impervious surface. Maybe that's something you should also look into, is trying to put a percentage of, maximum percentage of impervious surface for the roads and stuff like that. Trying to convince them, one of the things I was reading on the comp plan is to try to do the plannings in some of the, in the, some of the road rightaway and cul-de-sac holes, doing islands in the middle of the road and effectively kind of traffic calming and beautifying it a little bit. If you put some percentage of maximum impervious surface in, maybe that will increase, get you islands in the cul-de-sacs, reduce the number of cul-de-sacs, reduce the width of pavement at some places if it's possible. Do things like that.
Explain to me how we reduce the road length with RCDs.
With smaller lots, a standard lot in an R1 development's a hundred-foot wide. And so if you have a small, and it's a half, almost half, over, well over half acre. If you, the theory is, if you go down to a quarter-acre lot and reduce the width down to 70, 75 to 80 feet...
Okay.
And now, instead of having a, so it's 10 lots on either side, 100 feet long, it's a thousand foot long.
Okay.
10 lots on either side, 80 foot wide, now it's now down to 800 feet, reducing length of the road.
Okay.
And that should be part of the goal of conservation development, is reducing the length of the roads. It's also beneficial to your service department, less road length, less patching, less snow Less cul-de-sacs makes it easier for them to quickly do, do the roads, instead of having to spend perhaps the amount of time trying to clear a cul-de-sac.
Well, that actually leads right into one of the, one of the RCD design feature recommendations from the comp plan, on the back page, K. There's a possibility of allowing like basically non-frontage lots or lots on a common driveway, so like a private drive. So you have a private drive come off of a public road, and off that private drive, you might have three or four homes. And you could tuck away three or four homes off that private drive, while it reduced, it reduced the cost of the infrastructure for the developer and also for the township in terms of maintaining that.
Township doesn't take care of a private drive, right?
No, they don't.
Okay, that's my thought.
I know that subdivision regulations do have some allowances for common drives and things like that that we could look at too, and we seriously wanted to consider that as something that, a tool in the RCD that might allow a developer to get the density they want, but tuck the homes a little bit off back behind the woods or in an area where it made more sense, where they could still have a few homes that aren't facing the traditional subdivision street. Because I know, I think that, some of the comments we've heard on the RCD is you drive down there and it still looks like a regular development, there's nothing special about it. This group really liked the Concord Ridge one, because there seemed to be a lot more of the protected lands up front, adjacent to the road rightaway, but not all of them turn out like that. Some of all the woods are behind all the homes, so you don't get the same feel, but that could be a tool that would help developers and the township maintain some of the woodlands or some of those other areas, the open space areas.
One of the other things that the subdivision regulations do allow is a reduced slot rightaway width, with the recommendation of the county engineer and the utilities department. So long as we're able to get the road, sanitary sewer, water lines, storm sewer into the rightaway, some of these roads could be, some of these road widths could be reduced, and that means that lots would be moved back closer to away from other sensitive areas. Like on Eagle Point, you had that back corner where you had that ravine, and we had a lot of trouble trying to make sure that the houses stay outside and the grading states outside of the riparian setback. If we were able to, if we were able to reduce the rightaway width on that, on that road, they might have been able to push, pull the houses away from the, 10 feet away from the , away from the ravine.
Do the developers know that?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Because zoning is, they're trying to make you happy and they automatically, no one's ever asked about it. I have mentioned to a couple of times that you can do a reduced rightaway width, but nobody ever actually tried it.
Okay.
And depending on, it also depends on the road. Some of these roads have to be 60 feet wide, but some of these, like the streets, the stop streets going off to the next property over, or cul-de-sacs, short cul-de-sacs can also be reduced down too.
Okay.
And there's also other types of roads that are out there, there's types cul-de-sacs, so you can do like a one-way street around, doing, instead of doing a traditional cul-de-sac, you can do a one-way street around a, like make a knuckle instead of a cul-de-sac. And so you would be able to have houses around the thing, and then in the center you could have like a tension pond or a green space in the middle, in the middle of the rightaway for them to, for everybody to look at, kind of like a giant boulevard. And then the width of the road wouldn't necessarily need to be 22 feet wide if you go on one way, and just try to people make sure they go the right way around the cul-de-sac as they pull out their driveways. But you could go down to 16 feet, so you have an 11-foot passing lane and a 5-foot parking lane on the street, and so long as the fire truck can get through, all that really matters.
Okay.
You know, I think there's probably, we're looking at how we can guide this and put the restrictions and the numbers down. But you're getting into conservation development. The first criteria is how are you going to minimize the development to the surrounding areas that you want to save? Like ponds, you know, and wetlands and stuff. I think if we're trying to achieve that, what we should be looking at is what I would call flexible restrictions. In other words, put it back on the developer, he has a piece of land. He already knows what we're trying to achieve as far as preserving the environment. So what he should be able to do is, is take a look at the area that he's looking to develop, looking where the sensitive areas are. We have guidance as far as lot sizes, and you talked about Dave, street sizes and all that. Let him come back and say, you know, I can put a lot of this size, save this part of the land that we want to save. We can work with the county to do the road construction that you feel is adequate for utilities and things of all that nature. Let him come back with that. And then at that point, because he has flexibility, we as a board could look at that along with the county and the other agencies and say, yes, this could be achieved. The houses don't have to be lined up like they are today. They could be tucked in there in such a way that it looks, well, it looks like a nice preserve, and the homes are there, but they're situated in such a way that it just makes it desirable. You have achieved the goal of the sensitive part of the development land. It's there, be it streams or whatever it is. Developers can come in and put nice areas where people can walk and go through those type of developments. They've achieved their goal, first, and secondly, they made the development very desirable. When people would come in and they say, man, I love this area, you know? And this way here, we've achieved what we want to do, and the developer gets what he wants to do because of the desirability and the flexibility he will have for his development. That's my...
Yeah, I just, I wonder if, you know, the developer's goal is the same goal as ours though? Because I haven't seen any of them designed that way, where they're, they're trying to accentuate the, the open space or the environmentally sensitive features. You've reviewed a ton of subdivisions, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see any homes facing any of the streams. I don't see any of that stuff. They're all facing the road.
Because they're all worried about the buck.
Yeah, I just don't know how you...
That's what they're worried about.
...set aside, instead of, I can't even talk right now. But how do you make that a priority for the developer too?
When you deal with...
What's the flexible tool that we have to give them that gives them...
Well, that's the thing. That's why we have to work with them, so that they can achieve the goal that they want. Because we all know that, you know, visually, things sell themselves. People like an area that they love to live in, not just a development where there's home on top of home on top of home. They like, I know I do, but I like to save the woods and stuff around me and everything like that, and people come and they see how it's laid out, they have their home, but yet they got the surrounding land that's beautiful, that looks so nice. That in itself, to a developer, sells his home. And he's achieving what he wants. You'll probably get even more in that development than if you put row-by-row restrictions and these size houses. And also the owner who wants to buy and move into these places, they'll be willing to pay a little bit more money to do that, there again, because it's desirability. Aesthetically, it looks nice. They have a home that's tucked in, a nice area that they, with the birds and everything else, and the ponds and stuff, they're willing to pay for that, you know? And we've achieved it as a township and the way we developed the RCD, and the developer has achieved it because he knows he can get more money and have his development. We are both won by doing that. But you have to have, like I say, flexibility. Can't put tight restrictions on stuff. We have guidelines on what lot sizes we prefer to have, but if he can put it in such a way, and like Dave says, the roads that go in there in such a way, he achieves and maybe he gets another house in there, and it's still desirable, he got what he wants, and we got what we want, and we still preserve all that. That's my thoughts. But how you achieve that?
Yeah.
That's what we have to talk about.
Yeah, and that, that kind of leaves me...
I highlight that idea.
We'd have to reach out, you know, to the development community and...
Oh, sure.
...and find out, you know...
Well, can we make it a recommendation for an RCD to do that type of planning? Otherwise, you don't get an RCD.
I think that, forgive me if I, if I, I'm going to go off the cuff, because I was trying to get off real quick. I'm not sure what the purpose statement of the RCD, if you have a purpose statement in the RCD.
Yes.
What it says, maybe, the first thing you say in the purpose statement is that you want to have innovative development, maybe revise the RCD statement, I think what it says.
Yeah, that's a...
Promote health and safety through the application of flexible land.
Yeah.
You got to be a little bit more touchy, maybe a little bit more touchy-feely on the purpose statement. And say, we want to have an innovative site design to preserve sensitive areas of the township, sensitive land areas, to give a, a home site that will work upon the beauties of Concord Township or something to that effect. So you stated in your purpose statement, this is what we want to see in the RCD, and then that will drive the rest of the regulations and then put the innovative stuff in to try to, if you say, because right now, you got a purpose statement that just says we want to see a standard development that was a little bit innovative, and so you're still getting a standard, it's an RCD. still getting a standard, it's an RCD, but you're getting a standard development.
Yeah.
With the open space in the backyards of the houses that they're putting on there, you're still seeing rows and rows of houses up on the front of the street, it just looks like any other development.
With a bunch of grass in the back.
Right.
You have no idea that some of these developments are RCD.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I agree with some of that, like maybe, you know, adding some of that to the purpose statement, and even, that kind of goes along with these design features, we could add these into the zoning code and say, these are the things we want to see, or we, you could make some of them shells, I don't know, but if you want to be flexible, then maybe you don't want to say a shell, because every site is different, you don't want to say every fifth house you have to have a break-in open space, because that might not make sense, you know, but, but, but what you were saying Frank too, are you suggesting that we maybe don't say this is the minimum lot size, or do you, to give them even more flexibility, or not necessarily?
Say we have guidance, like the lot sizes, for example, or like Dave says, what the street would have to be from the county, those will be in there just as a guide, okay? Well, we, and my thing is flexibility. I want them to be able to use, the developer to use his creativity to come up with it, I mean, they're the supposedly the architects, they're the ones that know the size of their homes, what their homes look like. They have to sit there and work with the land that they want to put that on, and use their brains to come up with something that's very unique, that preserves the land that we want to see done, but yet allows them the flexibility of putting a size home, even if you ask that flexibility on the size of the lot or the size of the home. Because most people nowadays, I know a lot of senior citizens, for example, which we have a lot of in Concord, they don't want big homes anymore, they're, they're too expensive to maintain, for one thing, they don't want big lots, you know, stuff out there that they have to maintain a lot. If we allow the developer to use his creativity to achieve that, and we benefit from it by having the land developed, and we preserve all this sensitive area, we both achieve that goal. So that's why I use the word flexibility. Give them the flexibility to use his creativity, it's going to come to the board here, it's going to go to the county also for their approval, and the utility companies to see if this could be achieved, and within that, if they say they come up with something, say, well, you might have to do this, allow them the flexibility to be able to do that. He says, oh, I, I can do that, I can make this road a little bit smaller to achieve my goal.
Yeah.
Or maybe, that's the thing I'm saying, is the whole concept of my idea is flexibility, flexibility.
The trouble though Frank, is you still have to have guidelines though.
Yeah, the guidelines are here.
I mean, yeah.
But then again, on its merit, let's see how much he can come up with his thoughts and how he can flex it a little bit.
As long as you had some parameters, because otherwise, if you, if you turned it down.
Oh, sure.
But you approved this one, you turned down this one, you have to have some reason why you turned this person down.
Well, that's the thing. I want to be able to have developers that flexibility, that he knows I can work with the township, I can do things with them, and each developer, you put the, the responsibility on them, hey, they did it, this developer did it, I'm going to try to achieve it here so I can get that same kind of okay for mine too, because I'm doing the same thing to a degree in my way, and he has that flexibility. We both, we both achieved it, the developer's got what he wants, and we got what we want too. Our rules are here is, what I'm saying is a guide, just a guide. I, I just want to have quote flexibility in the areas that we're both going to be able to achieve the same goal, okay? We'll have some guidelines, of course.
You have to have some consistency.
But have some flexibility, right. Have some flexibility there, that he's able to do it, not have the temperament of losing the conservation park, which we're trying to achieve. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Heather, a question on the, the gas well, oil well. Is that active or capped off? Because we have both. In other words, talking about maybe having item three there, construction of new homes within a specific distance?
Um, I don't.
If you cap off.
It's probably active, I'm assuming, yeah, that isn't anything that we've really looked into yet.
Because I recall there was a well in the Stone Ridge Phase Two area, up near Gurnell Road.
Yep.
There was a well there, I, I don't know, I think it's gone now.
It is gone.
So it's capped off.
The well was capped off.
Okay.
There's supposed to, there were actually two wells on Stone Ridge and one in Orchard Springs.
Okay.
And they all, all the gas wells were, I know the one at the back end of Stone Ridge has been removed. I was told that the one in the front has been capped off and supposed to be removed also.
When you cap it off Dave, is it as safe as if it was never there, or?
No, it's, it's, it's not as safe as if it was never there, but it's, it's no longer as dangerous as having an open gas well there.
Okay.
There's still going to be, I mean, there was a house, and then from, from next door, a friend of mine's house where they bought it, and then one day they discovered the house has been there for 50 or 60 years, and one day it starts falling gas and found a gas well in their, in their front yard, and they never knew it was there, it was so old that nobody knew it was there, and it was a huge undertaking.
Did it cap below ground?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know how far below ground?
They did, they dug pretty deep to get to it.
Okay.
But they had to do some investigation to find it, I know, the family had to move out of the house for a couple of months.
Well, they did it.
That might be more of a reason to have some specified distance from where there was a well, whether it were active or capped off. I mean, if you, if we bought a lot, I don't know if you'd want the lot if you knew there was a capped-off gas well at the back of the property, so.
Well, the one lot in Orchard Springs had a, had the tank and the tank batteries behind the house, and a well in front of the house, for some odd reason, nobody wanted to buy it.
I wonder why.
Yeah. Well, Frank, Frank too, I don't know, like, I know a lot of cities put in their zoning codes that the development plan dictates the minimum lot size and the setbacks and the distance between the structures and things like that, which obviously gives a lot of flexibility to, to the developers, and then the reviewing agency actually approves the plan in addition to all those standards, rather than telling them in the code. I don't know if that's something that the township is permitted to do, if, if that's something that you were kind of suggesting, right? By giving them flexibility, not telling them these, this shall be this, shall be that, but allowing them the flexibility to come up with the plan and say, this is what we think it should be, and then.
Yeah, right, that's the thing.
Okay, so I, that's something that I could ask legal counsel, if that's even something that we can consider doing. In the past, they've been cautious about giving discretion in the zoning resolution, but perhaps being that this is a rezonant in RCD, that would be acceptable from a legal standpoint?
Well, I, yeah, if we can look into it, I mean, the object of this whole thing is conservation.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's the thing we're trying to achieve.
Yeah.
We want to achieve, giving them this kind of development. So there has to be, like I say, my opinion, flexibility. We give them guidelines, but if we can work with them on this, to achieve what we want to, and preserving the land and sens, sensitive areas of the land, and yet give them flexibility that they can work with us, and making alterations with, like I say, lot sizes or size of a home or whatever, roads and stuff like that, then it gives them more flexibility and desirability to want to do this. We'd all like to see this kind of development throughout the township, I'm sure, especially the way our township is, with the rolling hills and the bitumen, the cricks.
It also comes down to that everything easy in progress when developed, and now it's going to be difficult.
That's right, right now it's becoming even more sensitive to develop, so things like this definitely have to be the, the way to go in the township if we're going to continue to grow and allow things to be built. So, but then again, we want to be able to be, like I say, flexible, to work with developers to still achieve this.
Well, I'd like to find out from the developer, development community, are we, are, are there things in there that aren't flexible enough for you, and what would be those things that you?
Exactly.
Because maybe, I've never heard them say, well, it's not flexible, you know, you don't give me enough tools to be able to design something more creative, you know?
No, they don't, they just look at it and they see numbers, they see numbers, they go, oh, I have to, this is what I have to do, and this is what I don't want, I want to be able to work with them. See, okay, you see the numbers, but because we want to achieve the goal of conservation development, how can we work on this to achieve what you want and what we want to see the township to go? And since we are, like you say Dave, less and less land can be developed in Concord now, so even if it emphasizes more, that we have to have more flexibility.
Dave, I've got a question for you. If, if we're looking at an RCD, the one that I've seen is the lots are all up front, the houses are all spaced right next to the road, and then the back half is all RCD land, right? How do we accomplish the, the percentage of RCD land, not, not developed land, but RCD land, if we're going to stagger houses, have different setbacks or whatever? Somebody's going to end up with a front yard full of grassland. They're not going to want that.
Just have to design it so, we're trying to get, make sure that, that you can see, have a nice view, make sure each house has a nice view and doesn't look like any other development.
And, and I agree with that, but I just don't know how they're going to do that.
Well, there again, a lot of people, like I say, don't like to cut grass, for example. If the house is going to be situated in this area where there is wetland and, and stream or something right in front, or a marshy area in front, a lot of people don't mind that, they have their home in the back, for example, they don't have to take care of that, but they allow nature to take its course right there. And they prefer to have that rather than having to cut a big long lawn in front of your house. That's where, that's where I go back to the flexibility again.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
I guess it could work.
Yeah.
I guess it could work. Have we exhausted so much on that tonight?
No, I'm just, now we have totally another total different idea, you know?
Well, I throw, I throw it out there, because for many years, my wife and I, although we don't do it now, we vacationed down at Kiowa Island, South Carolina, and the whole island is a preserve, nature preserve. And the homes are all staggered throughout the island, you know, and they don't have little driveways, they'll have a main street that goes onto the island, but all of these homes and stuff are all tucked in the woods, and, and I mean, you have the egrets, you got the birds, and you also have the alligators that come through and stuff like that. But it's such a desirable and peaceful place to be, and it's because they have developed this island in such a way, the key issue is, is to keep nature. And that's what they've achieved down there over the years of development, and it's just so peaceful, so quiet. And then they have bike trails that go all through there, and you can run a bike and go through the whole island all day and not see the same place, because that's how big it is, and that's how nice the trail's coming. You do have to be careful, because there's been times I stumbled on a gator sitting and right, right, right in the path that we turned around and went back. I mean, that's an extreme, but the regulations on there is the, the houses can't be above the tree line, for one thing, they all have to be in such, they have to have a certain paint job so it blends in with nature, it's not like a stark blue house, or a stark white house, or a stark red house, or whatever. They do have regulations on the island, but the thing with it is it looks so peaceful and so beautiful, and they've allowed the developers to build in such a way that they have that flexibility. And they have different sized houses and stuff, different little roads that go back in there to get, that allows them to get into one or two homes back in the marsh area, and even have little areas where you can walk across little bridges from one across a stream to another marsh, for example. I know we don't go that extent, but it's because they've allowed this type of development to take place over the years that island has been developed, and they still have maintained the nature preserve with all the wildlife and everything. It's beautiful, it's desirable. We've, we've released a home on there that's just tucked in there, it's so beautiful, it's so nice and quiet, you know? But each house is somewhat unique, and the property is so unique to that house that's been in there. As long as it complies with the, like the aesthetics of the island they're trying to achieve, which I would like to see us to try to achieve that with what I call flexibility, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
At $3 million a house.
Well, that's, that, you're right, it's, it's expensive to live there.
Yeah.
But it would, it would be no different than, it'll be a little more expensive here too, I'm sure, but the desirability would be achieved on both ends, for the developer and for the township, and to achieve their conservation development, maintaining the land.
That kind of goes with that, that idea, and I guess of, you know, cluster development, which I know someone brought up at our last meeting, and, well, the, and it's kind of what you have to allow, you have to let the home cluster over here so you can keep larger tractable open space, but that seemed like it was a dirty word in Concord, so I'm not sure, you know, when, when the RCD was originally adopted, you know, what, what the township talked about, if they talked about clustering houses and allowing them to be closer or not, or, or maybe our thought was that the quarter acre was a cluster already, but back to maybe allowing a private street and allowing a few homes to be closer to one another would be.
Yes.
Would be a flex, something flexible that maybe we could.
Flexible.
Allow them to utilize if, if they went, met some certain threshold or something, or even just allow them as a tool.
Take that work, cluster out there, and put in flexibility.
Yeah.
Because that's the scary, you know, there's key words that you can put into certain things that scare people, and we don't want to do that, but we, we want to achieve this goal. Because even there on the island, for example, the island has 18, seven 18-hole golf courses as part of the, the island, but they do have homes in certain areas that are put together, one or two or three, around, one of the greens up by the green, for one of the greens for the holes, but then along the rest of the development going in there, there's a couple that are close here, but then the next one's way over there because there's a stream, there's a big marsh, you know? So they don't touch that because they're, they're again, it's a nature preserve. So that's the kind of thing I'd like to see us be able to put together like that for the township too.
So, along with that, talking about design of it, has anyone gotten a chance to look at some of these brainstorming ideas from, from the comp plan, where we could just kind of quickly maybe go through them, I guess?
I think we already talked about a few of them.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Alternately require that some front setbacks be, be deeper than others, so you stagger the houses.
Is that something we want to require, because then now you're not building enough flexibility, you're saying?
No, not, no, it's just. Don't make anything a requirement, sorry, but the, but the flexibility to do that, that's what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
Follow the, the front, just before item A, the following is a brainstorming list of types of additional standards that could, should, could be considered. We can give that to the developer and say, here's your, here's your laundry list, pick and choose.
Or tell them, look at our comp plan, this is what we want, you know?
Could it be something with all the brainstorming ideas, look at this, and if you hit a brainstorming idea, it adds extra percentage or whatever formula for extra lots, as an incentive of flexibility, but still using some of these, if you use some of this, you get a little bit of a different formula, do you need extra lots?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to see like different images of how this would look in the real world? Or seeing like four houses in an open space overlooking a wooded area?
Yeah.
We can find some examples in the real world of how you can, how this. you can, how this could look? Get some ideas of what you want to see and then regulations of...
Then we ought to have pictures of that to give to, to the developers.
Yeah. Well, kind of like what you're, what you're saying, Ashley. Yeah. Showing this to developers and making them aware of this. I don't know how we could, you know, we can look at maybe how we might be able to incentivize some of that, maybe with some kind of bonus or, or something. Or maybe it's just a, "These are the things that the township wants to see in your plan. This is what makes it a good project."
Could you give them a list of 20 or 30 suggestions, say, "We want you, your, your plan has to include at least five of these."
Or something, yeah.
You pick the five.
And we'll have to go through these a little bit more, do our due diligence on these because some of these we, we just don't allow. But if we wanted to encourage them, we could say, "You might be able to, you might be able to do a private drive with three houses on it and do smaller lots." You know, we, the township might be open to that, depending on what you're protecting and, you know, build that flexibility in to the zoning resolution that they don't have currently. Because right now, the only thing they can do in the RCD are these simple lots, quarter acre on a public street. There's no flexibility.
Right.
There really isn't.
Right.
Other than the smaller lot size.
Sure.
So, okay. Well, um, I think, well then, maybe what, what I need to do and talk to Dave about it, too, is maybe we could find some examples of some other communities that might have used some of these tools. Maybe I can, I'll check in with legal counsel, see what they feel about giving more discretion to the zoning commission and the trustees when we're reviewing these plans. And then how we might be able to incorporate some of this design stuff into the zoning and say, "This is what we want to see and this is how you might be able to do it." Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
I don't think we're gonna overhaul the whole review process in how we calculate the, the donkey and things like that, but we'll have to see what we get with this, stab it. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm on that subject.
Okay, all right. Okay. Can we stay to a half hour? Okay, thanks. Way longer. Okay, the next one, I'm... So I have one other thing that I have not brought up to the board that I wanted to, to, to bring up this evening. And I, and I know you haven't gotten an opportunity to, to really review it or even digest any of it yet, but I wanted to suggest that the zoning commission take a look at our zoning as it relates to micro distilleries and micro breweries and urban wineries. That we've kind of grouped those uses together as similar uses. We were actually approached by a business that was looking at bringing a micro distillery to Concord. They were concerned, looking at our definition, that maxed their production capacity up to 8,000 gallons per year. I think we initially adopted that in 2015 as one of the uses that we wanted to see in the town center. We thought that would be a great, you know, location for that. So we set these up as conditional uses in the capital district. And also a couple other zoning districts like the B1, GB, and the BX. So I gave you a little bit of background information on here on what the what the intent of all those districts are. And also I did, and I provided to you our current regulations as far as how we define these uses and what the specific conditions are for them. I did a, a little bit of research as well. Couple local communities with the city of Willoughby has on their zoning as far as that. And also Madison Township has some regulations as well. And then there's a lot of, there was a lot of research I came across, like down in the Columbus State area. They've really had a pretty, a lot of growth as far as micro distilleries. There's, from what I understand, what I've been told, there's been a lot of changes in the state law for distilleries that it's made a lot easier for them to grow. And actually, the state definition of micro distillery would allow them to grow up to 100,000 gallons per year, and they're still considered micro. So, um, so I, um, and it, I, I thought that due to the state changes in the law and the request by this business, that this would be a reason that maybe we should take a look at the maximum brewery capacity under the micro distillery and determine whether or not we should consider increasing that. I would say that we would want to make sure if we were gonna increase that, we would still, we'd probably want to relook at our conditions on, on the use itself and make sure that those make sense. You know, like right now, for a micro distillery, you have to have at least 20% of the floor area dedicated towards some kind of restaurant, bar, tasting room. That could also include some kind of retail component. Maybe we add in a retail component there as well. We also could, I, I've seen like in, in some of these districts, you might want to put a maximum square footage on the production area within a certain district. If you're, if you're concerned about the building being too big or some of the negative impacts that you might have from a true manufacturing company. Because obviously in, in our capital district and our town center, we don't want it to look or feel like, like manufacturing product, you know? We still want it to, to fit in with our town center concept, which would be, you know, a walkable pedestrian type area with dense mixed uses, restaurants, you know, retail, all that kind of stuff. So we would want to make sure that this use in that capitalist district would still fit in with that. We have some standards in place in the capital district already that say you have to have a two, a two-story building if you're gonna go under that ISPD, the Innovative Site Plan Unit of Development, which is the tool to get that town center built, if, if we ever accomplish that, or when we do, I should say. And of course, I know Andy is our expert on this, and he's not here this, now, he's not our expert, but he had a lot, he got a lot of input on this when we first adopted this. Because I know he's visited a lot of distilleries and such, so I, I'm... I know he'd probably have some feedback as well to the commission and some thoughts and ideas, but...
I can't recall, Heather, why we chose 8,000 gallons as, as our restriction. Do you remember, Frank?
I don't remember either.
No, I don't.
How we picked up that number, but what would be the difference looks-wise in a facility that, that brewed 8,000 versus 25,000? Would it be four times bigger or...
You know what? I don't know.
Well, I know I, there's a one that, that we used to go to when our corporate office was in Dayton. They have a nice one down there. It all depends on the size of the big manufacturing tanks they have
Yeah.
to be able to give the capacity.
Right.
So if you look at, you know, like they say, 120,000 gallon baby, that's huge. The tank itself and the brewery itself, part of it is huge, couple, couple stories. The restaurant we would always go to that had this kind of a concept, they were smaller tanks. They weren't that bigger. They wouldn't even go anywhere near the roof here, or it's the ceiling here. And there was about four of them that were set back. And then the restaurant was in front of there. You could see the things being done, the manufacturing being done. You could smell the brew, smell the beer and stuff. And the restaurant was there, and then they did have a, a gift area where you could buy gifts, but also buy the booze to take the beer with you home. And then within a shopping complex, like we would have here with the township center.
Yeah, wow.
So it wasn't that big.
Yeah.
But yet, the capacity, I don't think would be, you know, 120,000. When you get up there, the tanks have to be much bigger to do that capacity, which could make it quite large, two stories probably.
The Market Garden Brewery in Cleveland has those big copper tanks there. I don't, but I don't know what their capacity is. They have a nice restaurant. Very nice facility.
Very nice. But it'd be something we'd have to look into, the gallon wise, like you say. Andy probably knows more about that. But then we have to look at the nature where it would go in the township, which would be the township center. How big do you want this to?
Yeah. And that's another thing I didn't have time to do because this was just, I just threw this together. But I could look at some of the other micro distilleries and things around Ohio and, and see kind of what are their square footage requirements? What do they have views towards? I mean, I, I saw a few that recently opened up. But a lot of them were like converting from like old buildings, like in developed, pre-developed areas already. So they, you know, converted some like really cool, unique building into this like thing. And we're not gonna get that here. We don't, we just don't have that.
Right.
So...
If you're doing research, Jackson Township, North Canton in Canton.
Oh.
That little area. I used to live there a couple of years ago. Who live up with micro breweries, there's probably a dozen of them in that little... Jackson is a township.
Yeah.
So that might be a little better.
Star County.
Yeah, it's All-Star County. It actually has one of the largest micro breweries, Royal Dock. So that might be also a decent thing with research of looking at what a large micro brewery.
Okay.
Um, has, it has a lot of little smaller ones, but there's some that are the size of this, too, though.
Okay, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Just a little room. So it's really just, I was trying to see how much they do.
Yeah, I can look into that.
And it's a little, I was just looking at the website. It's a little harder to figure out.
Yeah, I can contact the township, too, and, and find out, you know?
Yeah, right in the little section, they've done a lot. And I take a wild stab. They've had a rezone that pretty recently.
One other thing I saw while putting this together, too, is in the city of Willoughby, they had said, you know, once you exceed this, this maximum, I think they said there's a 50,000
50,000.
to be considered micro. Once you exceed that, you're just a distillery. And therefore now you're allowed to be in whatever this industrial district is. So that might be something, too, that we might want to look at, you know? If we want to allow it as a standalone light manufacturing use in our RD2 district, you know, we, that might be something we might want to add.
Good point.
You know, because I don't think we specify that.
To put a micro up to this point and then a distillery up to that point.
Yeah, I thought that was kind of a, yeah. Yeah, I thought that was kind of unique, you know, same thing with the breweries and stuff, but... So if you don't mind, I, I mean, I can come back with, I can take a look at Jackson and maybe try to find some sizes of some of this stuff and come back with a little bit more information. And in the meantime, if you guys want to review this and if you see anything in here or that you want to discuss further, email me, call me, or, you know, bring it up next month.
Okay.
You know? And then I don't know, Dave, do you have anything else on that? I don't, because obviously, Dave is sending annual amendments to the town planning pressures for the recommendation on some of this. So I don't know if you had some additional thoughts on us increasing the capacity?
Just looking at some of the other ones, they go like barrel. And I think a brewer's barrel, I was just looking up on the internet, is 31 gallons a barrel. So 5,000 barrels is like 155, 5,000 gallons spirits or beer. So some of these that, that being provided to you, keep that in mind that there are some, there are 4,000, they have, one of them is 4,000 barrels and 104,000 gallons. It's listed at Beaver Creek, right next to Beaver Creek.
Yeah, it's like the breweries are doing the barrels, but the distilleries were...
The brewery does gallons.
Gallons.
What's over 8,000 gallons to 50,000 gallons? Isn't that a big of a deal?
Oh, okay.
And some of these other ones are hundreds of thousands of gallons of beer or spirits.
Yeah.
Yeah, 8,000 gallons, so 8,000 milk jugs versus 25,000.
But if you look at the alcohol content...
At 31 gallons.
Oh, you said, okay.
31 gallons, so if they say a barrel is, is 31 gallons.
Okay.
But now if you look at the alcohol content, there's a big difference.
Oh, yeah.
One barrel, Dave, you said is 32 gallons?
31 gallons.
31 gallons per barrel.
That's good to know, yeah.
So if you're looking at other regulations, some will, will use barrels as close to gallons. Like what's in the comp that, that, that's the, that's the new rule.
I think in, in some of the, looking at the purpose statements for the zoning districts that these are conditional uses in, like in the BX, our Business Interchange District, you know, I really don't have any issue with like increasing the capacity here because it's, this district is really for, you know, uses that go outside of the neighborhood, you know? I, I think that it fits in either way under the gateway business. As long as you're, you know, because we have other design criteria as far as how you lay out the site that kind of dictate how the property is used more so than the uses within the building. Same thing with like the, if they were to do a town center or the capital district, we have a lot of the site plan design standards that, you know, work really with any use that's in that building, as long as the building and the the parking and all that stuff meets the, um, the, the zoning and how we want the sites laid out. It, it's almost as long as the use inside the building is, inside the building, you know? I, I don't, I don't really see an issue in increasing that capacity. I'm not sure why we wanted them in the B1, restricted retail district, though. That was, well, I guess if they went into a shopping center, they could do a small, like, yeah, okay, like your example. But definitely not up, you probably wouldn't want something that was producing up to 25,000 gallons.
No.
Yeah.
The point of you, my, my opinion, the point of the downtown of the, the capital district
Yeah.
is to attract people to Concord. So they would come down and visit and spend money at your facilities. And what you want to avoid is also just trying to create a situation where you have a brewery or a distillery that is making their spirits, bottling it and selling it in Giant Eagle and have 75% of their sales happening outside of the facility. Because that kind of defeats the purpose of, of what you're trying to achieve by having micros, distilleries and micro breweries. You're trying to get people to come to visit you and spend money. And then maybe come down to the brewery and stop at one of the shops next door and spend some time in your community like people do in downtown Willoughby.
They also do tours of those facilities. I just looked up Market Garden in Cleveland is 35,000 square feet.
Oh.
And they produce 6,000 barrels of beer. So 6,000 barrels would be about 20,000 gallons roughly, using your 31. 31 times, uh...
6,000.
Six...
31 times 6,000 is 86,000 gallons.
86,000, okay, so they get 86,000 out of there, wow.
And the same, same thing with, uh, Christmas out of, I was gonna say, Puerto Rico.
Great Lakes?
Great Lakes, they also do tours. And they do, and they're very environmentally conscious, so they, so they do different things to promote
There's several in, in Willoughby, too. I don't, do they have a distillery? I'll have to be checking with some folks at the city of Willoughby to get some insight on the, the zoning that they have in place and how that came about and if they have any one that's that utilizes.
Willoughby Brewing Company did beer.
Yeah, but I think that was new, though, for Willoughby.
Yeah, that could have been.
Newer than Willoughby Brewing Company, so... All right.
Also keep, also keep in mind that the state of Ohio and their liquor licenses will dictate a lot of what these businesses can do. a lot, but what these businesses can do, I, I've worked for, my department has a contract with Federal Harbor, where we provide zoning services, so I get to learn all about liquor licenses, how much area that people need to have to be able to get a liquor license, how much dining area, how much that you need to have a kitchen, so they feed a dining space, so there are other things that will be taken into consideration as they apply for liquor license that they're going to be forced to do. But again, they also could get creative, because there was one guy who wanted to do a brewery on the beach, and he was looking at having a food truck to be able to prepare the food and then have a patio and have the brewery, the garage, interesting scenario.
I've seen some that just don't serve food.
Right, yeah. That, that's a little bit of a concern. I mean, I know, and that's the one thing, we wanted to make sure that they had at least some kind of interaction, but that might be something that we would need to button up, too, because, say, maybe they have a tasting room, but the tasting room's open one day for two hours a week. You know, is that, so is that something else we need to look at, or, I don't know? Is it only open for special events, or do we need to be worried about that? Do we need to increase the amount of area that's dedicated towards some kind of retail or restaurant use, or, or put a limit on the max, you know, a maximum size?
Max size, and the percentage that has to be a restaurant, or testing, or testing, tasting.
At the top of your head, do you know what it's located in? Do you know the pages it's located in?
I'm sorry?
Do you know off the top of your head the pages in the big binder that this is located in?
Oh, yeah.
Little section.
Yeah.
And then you took a small.
I took the definitions in there for you, but, right, so, um, the definitions are in section five.
Okay.
In their alphabetical order.
Okay.
And then, um, the conditions that I listed there, and that's section thirteen, you'd have to look at the table of contents, section and C specifically, I think, thirteen, thirteen and five, I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry, but.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
And if you, if you're ever looking at any of that, and you have questions, you can call me. I can walk you through the zoning resolution or explain it to you. It's foreign language to anyone new that's never done zoning enforcement or any of that kind of stuff, you know, so don't, let me know.
Are we done with our work session, you think?
That's all I have, unless.
Okay. So moving on with the agenda, your approval of minutes of December 1, 2020. Anybody have any comments, corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the December zoning meeting as written.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
You second? Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Say aye.
All right.
Aye. Oppose?
Abstain, because I wasn't here.
One abstain. And that's three out of four, that's still good?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought, just, just checking. Okay, the meeting minutes of December 1, 2020, zoning commission meeting are approved. Next on the agenda is correspondence report by zoning commission members. Frank, do you have any?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have none.
Rich?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Ashley?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman has none also. Audience participation. Andy, where are you? You want to wait a minute, or isn't anybody online at all?
No.
Okay. Nobody's online. Next meeting for the zoning commission is February 2nd, Groundhog's Day of 2021. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, do I hear a second?
I second.
Frank seconds. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. Oppose, same side. No abstentions either. Okay, we're done. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Dave, very much.